I'd like to call to order the June 13, 2012 meeting of Milton School Committee. And as is our custom, we invite you to rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll first ask you to approve the agenda. The only agenda really item tonight is the interviews of the prospective appointees for the remaining 10 months this year for the Milton School Committee. So unless someone else has something they'd like to add to the agenda, I think we'll declare the agenda approved.
Move approved.
As it is. All right. So just for folks at home, we have 11 applicants for the school committee position. This is an appointed position. It will be served until the 4th Tuesday in April, at which point someone will be elected to fill this seat. So it is an interim, roughly 10-month appointment. We have 11 people who have indicated interest in this, and we are going to do brief interviews with them tonight. The actual vote will be taken at a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen, which is scheduled for next Tuesday night at 8 o'clock, I believe, right here. So that's the process. We'll do the interviews tonight, the discussion, and the vote will actually be next week. Mass General Law is required that it be a joint meeting of the Selectmen and the School Committee. Since there are eight eligible voters between those two committees, it would require five votes to appoint someone to this position. It's a little unusual in that it's not a majority of those present. It's actually a majority of those able to vote. So regardless of who's there, we have to have five votes. We have to try to arrange these at a time when it's usually convenient for everybody. So that's why it's looking like next Tuesday night at 8 o'clock, we have posted for the joint meeting. So we will move to our interviews tonight. Mr. Walker has generated a random list of our candidates, so we will take them in the order of generation. So who is our first?
Our first is Adrian Sullivan.
So if you care to join us at the table. We have -- I apologize, with 11 people, we have only 15 minutes apiece tonight.
I understand.
So it is not a lot of time. We have five questions for people, and I'll give you an opportunity to ask a question of us at the end. So that is our format.
Great. And I'm the timekeeper, and I'll give a two-minute notice to the committee when it's time.
Okay. Mr. Walker has the first question.
So welcome and congratulations on being the first of the 11 interviews.
Thank you.
This is a question that gives you an opportunity to talk a little bit about yourself. What makes you the best qualified candidate for this interim appointment?
Okay, that's a great question. And I'd have to say, I actually have a well-rounded perspective, so I can provide a full 360 view. Three major perspectives that I do have is, one is my professional experience. My education is, I started out at Mass College of Art, and I graduated from University of Massachusetts at Boston with a degree in history and philosophy, with the intent of becoming a history teacher. But I started to work in the financial industries field as well, and soon acquired an MBA in finance. And I have worked with investment management industries on the global nature for international and emerging market equities. And from there, I moved into the consulting field for technology and operations. So using the extensive financial background, technology and operations, from a business perspective, I can completely appreciate the work of the school committee, the work of the administration, and the work of everybody within the school district to create the best possible educational environment for the children. So that's one perspective, is my professional perspective. My second perspective is my newly garnered educational perspective. As a career changer, I am currently enrolled at Bridgewater State for the graduate program to receive my initial license to teach history and business. So I'm halfway through that program. I've completed all the coursework. I've had the opportunity to do my pre-practice experience sitting through many local high schools. My intention is to teach high school history and economics. So I also have that perspective, a newly emerging perspective, of what it is to be an educator in a classroom. And the third perspective is the perspective of a parent and resident in the town of Milton. And I think that perhaps is the greatest perspective there can be. Coming off of the 350th celebration and recognizing the strong K through 12 educational opportunities there are in this town, it's a fantastic time to put your name forward, to be part of the school committee. There's so much positive momentum from the kindergarten classes all the way to the graduating high school classes. And I really would like to join, I recognize it's an interim position, it's going to be filled by whoever gets elected in April, but I would like to join the team and be part of the discussion and process up until April, and continue the positive momentum that the school committee has already garnered. And also, the work of the administration with the Superintendent Gormley, Assistant Superintendent Valen, and Assistant Superintendent Gillis, they have proven themselves to be unsung heroes in terms of day and night, and how much they work for this town. And I don't think people realize, they literally are day and night making sure that every child in this town gets the best possible education. And I've heard Mary Gormley say many times in many audiences, you know, "Your children are my children." And a couple of times, you say, "Okay." But you really see it. And as a parent of two children in the elementary level and a child in the seventh grade, my husband and I are faced with that decision of what do we do for high school. And having the quantitative and analytical background, I drove my husband crazy with spreadsheets and analyzing and creating benchmarks of what we expect for our high school education. And Milton High, across all that metrics, Milton High came up every single time. And it's just a tribute to, I'm not alone in what I say. It's a tribute to what the school system has, and I just want to be part of that as well.
Thank you.
So what do you see as the priorities for the school committee and the district in the next two years?
So there actually could be very general priorities and very specific priorities. The general priority would be to stay ahead of the state and federal gestalt in terms of the election process. So we're really not sure what's going to happen at the federal level with Race to the Top. And Secretary of Education Ari Duncan has already come forward saying, you know, charter schools, urban schools, that's the priority. We're really not sure what is going to happen in terms of where education falls at the federal level. Of course, that trickles down to the state level. And with Chapter 70 and 2 and 1/2, the 2 and 1/2 override constraint, clearly the budget, as always, is a priority, and managing the budget and being fiscal responsible. And that's something that, when you look at the budget of this school district, you recognize that there's a lot to be balanced. Specifically, I think, as a school district, we could focus more on K through 12 families and really acknowledging everything that this town has to offer. I think sometimes when a child enters elementary school, as a new parent, they're not really sure of what is offered. So as a school district, we could do more to actually tout ourselves and acknowledge what's going right and how we are meeting the common core requirements that are yet to be established. I think when it all is said and done, ELA and math is already in the hopper, so to speak, but everything else in terms of STEM and 21st century learning, that type of work is already in place and ready to reap benefits. And that's something that we can see as a school district, specifically how that's going to be done in the classroom, I think is something that, when you move to the general to specific, is really kind of where a lot of this discussion will occur.
Can you discuss your record of involvement in support for the Milton Public Schools?
Sure. As I've stated before, we are definitely a K through 12 family. I don't know if I could have said that about 10 years ago, and I think that's because there was a lot of uncertainty around the facilities. And when you walk into every school now, these are brand-new facilities. There's nothing that is more comparable to setting the tone for how our children learn. So in terms of that, I do a lot of volunteer work. Most recently, I have been working with Meet the Artists, which is a great elementary school program. The volunteer parents, they're art teachers themselves, and they've set up curriculum. So it's an easy volunteer opportunity for parents to go to the classroom and discuss certain artists. And every year, from kindergarten, I think the curriculum is already set up to fourth grade, so every year, the curriculum rolls out and further. You have four artists that the children see, and it evolves every year with the curriculum. And that's a great way to be part of it on a day-to-day basis. Also, I had the pleasure of chaperoning the Mass JCL conference with Pierce Middle School with the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And it was fantastic to see our middle schoolers interact with the rest of the other schools in the area that are part of the Junior Classical League. And they are on par in terms of academically and discussing the classics, but also having fun. And it was great to see it. Our Milton pride show in that conference as well.
What has the school committee done well over the last three years, and what do you think we could have done better?
I think what has worked very well, and it's hard to identify specifically, tangibly, what's really going on, but it's a cooperative spirit. It's a communitative spirit where this is a deliberative body. You're very clear. Your oversight and policy is very clear, and your support of the administration is something that allows teachers to do their jobs. It allows the superintendent to have the environment she needs to create the school system that everybody has idealized. So there's, you know, nothing's perfect. There's a lot of work to be done, but there always will be. But I think that's where it's nice to have the give and take of a school committee with the oversight, with also a strong relationship with the superintendent, the administration, and clearly the respect for the teachers in the classroom and putting children first is what is coming to the fore.
And things that we didn't do as well, Lon?
Well, I think there's things in terms of communication. You know, we live in a digital age. It'd be great to have a little more updated communication in terms of, you know, obviously, it's wonderful to be able to look at the school committee open meetings on cable access and so on, but I think more and more people are looking to the website for information, and kind of more up-to-date information, I think, would be very helpful to the constituents. Thank you.
So this is a broader question. As we think about, those of us who have the courage to become school committee candidates, we start off perhaps being motivated to do that by a single issue or set of issues, but realize very quickly that the responsibility of the school committee is one where you have to have a big-picture perspective. And you have to do that in a way that represents every level of the school system, every student. Talk a little bit about how you might approach that.
Sure. To have a balanced perspective, I think you need to have all the information in front of you. You also need to listen. Certainly, my professional experience working in the business world has helped me tremendously in terms of being able to balance information. And sometimes, it's not the answers, but it's the questions, and continuing asking questions until you can understand. And the most important thing is to understand somebody else's perspective. And so I think watching the school committee meetings, that's something that the school committee does do very well, is ask for perspectives. And I also believe that I could join, hit the ground running, and be part of the team, and ask for the perspective, and provide a balanced approach.
Great.
Do you have any questions for us?
Two minutes.
Two minutes?
Sorry.
So just an open question. What has surprised you most about being on the school committee? And what do you like, well, I feel I have two minutes. What's surprised you most, and what do you like most about being on the school committee?
You're the newest one, so why don't you speak to that one?
I'm not easily surprised, so I don't think there were many big surprises. I think that, as I've entered my second year, I would say the complexity of certain issues is something that's quite sobering. And the issue that we're dealing with right now about first-grade enrollment, how many facets that issue has to it, and how you have to be certain that as you approach these issues, you're addressing every facet so that you don't fix a problem over here and create one over here. So I think, I don't know that that was a surprise, but it is a very sobering responsibility, and one which requires, as you said, to make sure you have as much information available as possible. And I agree with you. Ask a lot of questions and keep an open mind.
I would say the working as a team with these folks, our member school committee didn't used to be like that, and it really does feel like we've worked hard to become part of a team. And I think Mary and John and Matt set that tone as well. And it's really important that folks, to me, know that we need to be collegial and part of a team, and that there are many different sides to an issue. We don't have to agree, but, you know, we have to play nice in order to make the school system continue to be as strong as it is. Can't be a divisive operation, in my opinion.
And I think, no matter how much you're involved in the schools, you're always amazed at how much is actually going on. There's just an enormous amount of activity.
Time is up. And time would be my thing, is that I think people don't have a clue of how much time.
Right.
Second.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, and thank you for all of your work, and your continued work. Thank you.
And as I said, the choice will be made on Tuesday night at the meeting of the Board of Selectmen and us.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right. Well, our second candidate tonight is Katie Conlon. Nice to see you, Katie.
Hey, Katie. Thank you all. Nice to see you.
Mary, if I could ask, when we hit the two-minute warning, could at that point you go get the next candidate, so we don't have the lag here?
Sure.
When I say two-minute warning, maybe.
All right. Well, our format is fairly brief. We have 15 minutes per candidate. We have a series of five questions and an opportunity for you to ask us at the end, anything you have. We are doing the interview tonight. The joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen is next Tuesday night at 8:00. And that's when we'll be making decisions.
Okay.
So there's the 30-second version of the process. So Mr. Walker has the first question.
Welcome. Hi, Katie.
Hi, Leroy. Thank you.
What makes you the best qualified candidate for this interim appointment?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for the interview tonight, for your consideration. I think my primary qualification is my service in town government. I've been a town meeting member for 19 years. First got elected when I was 19 and in college, so quite a long time ago. Had a few years off in between. I did serve on the Warren Committee for five years. I was the chairman for three years. And I think that is a good background for really any of the elected boards in town. When I was stepping off the Warren Committee, I did consider running in a couple of years after that. The reason I didn't was I had an opportunity to go on the board of directors of Milton Hospital, no, Beth Israel Deaconess Milton Hospital. And that was a significant time commitment, mainly because shortly thereafter, we were starting discussions with the IDKness Medical Center. So it was a very substantial commitment of time, and that's really taken me out of considering running for this committee or any town board during the ensuing years since I stepped off the Warren Committee in 2008. But I feel like I have the time now to do it. We're six months into our integration. It's no longer the time commitment that it once was. So when this opened up, I thought I would apply and see where it goes. But I think my primary qualification is basically the Warren Committee, because that's an opportunity, as many of you know, a couple of you have been on the Warren Committee, others of you have dealt with the committee over the years. So as you know, that's a good opportunity to get to know the department heads, the other town elected officials, to understand how the operating budget as a whole works, how the capital budget works, what the different needs of the departments are. I worked a lot with the school committee and the school departments during my five years on the committee. My first year on the committee, when I was a member, I was on the school subcommittee for the first year. And then after that, I was on different subcommittees. But it's an opportunity to really work with the superintendent, the business manager, to get to know the players involved, and to, I think, develop a good understanding and good experience for whatever route you might take with whatever committee.
Thanks. Katie, what do you see as the priorities for the school committee and the district in the next two years?
Well, I think the priorities, probably everyone had the same answer, maintaining a good quality of education for our students. We have a great French immersion program, so that's always, and I know you've had some issues recently with having to cut off the enrollment for the next year at a certain time because of logistical issues. So I think that's probably one of the big issues in the coming years, because the enrollment in that program is up, to focus on how the needs of the parents who are interested in that program, as well as an English program, how that might best be managed. So I think that's a priority. I know special education is a significant portion of the budget, so I think addressing those needs, I know there's an opening for a new principal, so I imagine that's another high priority for this committee. And you've gone through some management changes recently, so I know you've been in a transition period as well. So I think those are probably the priorities. Funding and budgeting is always an issue, and that's probably going to be an issue for as long as there's a school committee, but I imagine addressing the budgetary needs is another one of your priorities.
Can you discuss your record of involvement and support for the Milton Public Schools?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Can you discuss your record of involvement and support for the Milton Public Schools?
Well, I disclosed in my letter. I'm not a parent, so I have not had a direct experience with the schools as a parent or even a student myself in the Milton Public Schools, but I certainly have been a donor over the years to some of the different fundraising efforts that the school committee makes. I did participate in some other activities, volunteer activities, through other organizations that are education-related. One of them touched on the Milton Schools, the Boston Bar Association and the U.S. Bankruptcy Court, sponsor of financial literacy program. And I've taken part in that over the last five years. It's a very minor time commitment. It's a matter, it's a five-week program, and it's intended to educate high school students on issues like credit cards, buying a car, I know that's the class that they all seem to enjoy the most, personal finance and budgeting, and then they go for a field trip to the bankruptcy court to learn a little bit about debt and what the consequences of too much debt might be. So I've taken part in that program, and I've been to Milton High School, as well as to other high schools in the area, Milton High School two or three times, just giving a presentation on credit cards. So that's, but other than being a donor and being on the Warren Committee, that's really the limit of my involvement with the Milton Schools.
What do you think the school committee has done well over the last few years, and what could we do better? What have we done well, and what could we do better?
Well, I think what the school committee does well is probably a number of things, but I think communication is one of them. You seem to have a lot of communication, from what I hear, with parents, certainly with the Warren Committee. I know there was a lot of communication between both committees. I know that your website certainly has a lot of information, having looked at it in recent weeks. So I think that's probably a strength. What you could do better, you know, I'm not sure that I can really think of something where you can really do better. My relationship with the school committee when I was on the Warren Committee was good. That's really the perspective that I've had with the school committee. I know that parents in certain programs have voiced concerns about funding over the years, and I know that you do what you can do in those instances. So I really don't have enough knowledge of, it's outside of my experience with the Warren Committee, enough knowledge of what your other involvement has been to know what some other areas are where you might do better. I think you do a pretty good job.
Thank you.
It's never a bad answer. While it's often the case that when any of us are motivated to run for school committee, that might occur because of a particular issue, a particular set of issues, but I think one realizes very quickly that the roles and responsibilities of a school committee member are much broader. So talk a little bit about how you might approach ensuring that you would represent every level of the school system and every member of the student population. How would you do that?
Well, I think, coming at it as someone who's not, as I said, not a parent, and not a teacher also, that's not my day job. I know some of the committee members have an educational background in teaching. But I think there's a role for someone who, you know, comes at it objectively, not coming into the committee through the perspective of a parent of a student at a particular school, or through having certain particular experiences with the school department. I think as someone who would be coming with my background, I certainly would be able to view the committee's work independently and objectively, and focus on the system-wide needs. And I'm sure, you know, everyone does to one extent or another. I think it might be an advantage to have a member of your committee be someone who's maybe coming at it from a different angle, not having had the direct personal experience, but certainly having an understanding of what your budget is, and what it has been over the years, and what some of the town-wide and some of the town government issues are. And being able to approach the committee with that particular background, I think, would help to focus on the system as a whole, rather than focusing on a particular school or a particular issue that impacts the schools.
Well, do you have any questions for us?
I really don't have any questions for you. I did look at a lot of your materials on the website, I read a lot of your minutes from your recent meetings. I know that you're juggling a lot of different issues, but I really don't have a specific question for you. Over the years, I've talked to current and former school committee members to get a sense of what the time commitment is and what the responsibilities are. So I think I have a pretty good sense, just from having served as a town meeting member and as a Warren Committee member.
Well, thank you very much. As I said earlier, we'll be having our joint meeting next Tuesday night, where we'll be discussing this and holding a vote.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Katie.
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you.
Do you need to give my notes?
Hmm. Ruro.
All right. Well, our second candidate tonight is Katie Conlon. Nice to see you, Katie.
Hey, Katie. Thank you all. Nice to see you.
Mary, if I could ask, when we hit the two-minute warning, could at that point you go get the next candidate, so we don't have the lag here?
Sure.
When I say two-minute warning, maybe.
All right. Well, our format is fairly brief. We have 15 minutes per candidate. We have a series of five questions and an opportunity for you to ask us at the end, anything you have. We are doing the interview tonight. The joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen is next Tuesday night at 8:00. And that's when we'll be making decisions.
Okay.
So there's the 30-second version of the process. So Mr. Walker has the first question.
Welcome. Hi, Katie.
Hi, Leroy. Thank you.
What makes you the best qualified candidate for this interim appointment?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for the interview tonight, for your consideration. I think my primary qualification is my service in town government. I've been a town meeting member for 19 years. First got elected when I was 19 and in college, so quite a long time ago. Had a few years off in between. I did serve on the Warren Committee for five years. I was the chairman for three years. And I think that is a good background for really any of the elected boards in town. When I was stepping off the Warren Committee, I did consider running in a couple of years after that. The reason I didn't was I had an opportunity to go on the board of directors of Milton Hospital, no, Beth Israel Deaconess Milton Hospital. And that was a significant time commitment, mainly because shortly thereafter, we were starting discussions with the Deaconess Medical Center. So it was a very substantial commitment of time, and that's really taken me out of considering running for this committee or any town board during the ensuing years since I stepped off the Warren Committee in 2008. But I feel like I have the time now to do it. We're six months into our integration. It's no longer the time commitment that it once was. So when this opened up, I thought I would apply and see where it goes.
Do they have the overview? Have they even given the overview of the process?
I'm giving it every time.
Yeah, I talked to each of them as I took them down.
I'm sorry, you talked what?
I talked to each of them as I took them down. They were wanting to say fifteen minutes. You'll have a chance to ask at least one question, random order.
Our next candidate is Justin Renz, if you've joined us at the table. You're welcome, and thank you for volunteering.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Good evening.
Hi.
We have fifteen minutes to interview everybody. We have a series of five questions and an opportunity for you to ask us something at the end. We are doing interviews tonight, and we will be holding our joint meeting with the selectmen next Tuesday at eight o'clock, at which point we'll be making the decision. Tonight, we're just going through the interview process.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's the quick overview. And Mr. Walker has the first question.
Welcome, Justin.
Thank you.
What makes you the best qualified candidate for this interim appointment?
Three things. One, I believe in education. My parents paid for the majority of my undergrad education, but I tried to validate their investment by passing the CPA exam within six months of graduation. I put myself through two master's degree programs. And I continue to put myself current with my CPA license, even though I haven't been in industry in over fifteen years. My wife put herself through undergraduate and paid for her graduate school. So we very much are believers in education. We also are believers in Milton. We have been property owners since 1999. I am very active in the community. I coach Little League in baseball and soccer. I'm an active runner. Was our first Milton resident last night in the 10K. And two weeks from tomorrow, I'm the race director of a road race that benefits the Michael A. Devon Foundation, whose proceeds benefit scholarships for Milton High School seniors, as well as the Council on Aging, as well as the Milton Food Pantry. And I'm a believer in education in Milton. I have a niece entering her sophomore year at Milton High School, a niece entering eighth grade, a nephew and a niece entering seventh grade, a nephew entering sixth grade, a nephew and a niece entering fifth grade. My twins are entering second grade, and I have a son entering first grade. So I'm very much committed to Milton and education in Milton.
So, Justin, what do you see as the priorities for the school committee and the district in the next two years?
Thank you. I think superintendent and her team have done a remarkable job with the resources they have. But we need to try to move towards a more sustainable model where the superintendent and her team do not have to be reactionary every year to the budget challenges. So as I understand the challenges, my company loses between thirty-five and forty million dollars a year as a publicly traded company. And my job is to bring in the resources to spend that money, to make sure it's a valid investment for our shareholders. And the school budget is approximately ironically about thirty-five million dollars. And so I think we need to closely look at everything to make sure that all of our resources is going into the best places, that we're as effective and efficient as possible, and to give the superintendent and her team a chance to not have to react to changes on the fly as much as they seem to have to. I'd like to try to build towards a more sustainable model where teachers are not getting ping slipped every year, where we can look ahead. And that'll be a challenge that won't be solved in one year, but I think it's something we need to move towards.
Can you discuss your record of involvement in and support for the Milton Public Schools?
Sure. So I mentioned earlier my involvement in Milton. I've been very close to some of the talent here. My wife taught here for nine years, and so I was very supportive of her. She was very active in the community when she was a teacher here, helping coach as well. Personally, as I mentioned, I try very hard to help the young people in our town moving towards Milton High School. I'm very much a believer in education. And as I mentioned, I tried to get more involvement community-wise by taking over this road race director job, where the primary beneficiary is scholarships for our high school seniors here.
Okay. And what do you think the school committee has done well over the last few years? And what could we do better at?
Sure. Thank you. So I think the school committee has done a remarkable job in general supporting Superintendent Gormley. I think superintendent does a very good job managing the programs here. I think she could use some more support in terms of resources, of course. And I think she, as I mentioned earlier, she's often been forced to be reactionary to the challenges as opposed to being proactive. So I would say, again, we need to move towards a more sustainable model. At the same time, our schools are very well thought of. Obviously, our town is well thought of by the national publications, primarily because of the success that our schools have and the perception of how top-quality our students are, as well as the diversity in the programs that we have here in Milton.
Thank you.
So, Justin, it is often the case that one is motivated to run for school committee because of a particular issue or a set of issues. But I can tell you that you realize very quickly that the responsibilities of a school committee member are much broader and much deeper. Can you talk a little bit about how you would make sure that as a school committee member, you represent each level of the system, every program in the system, and ensuring that each of our students gets the best possible education? How would you approach that? How would you make sure that that happens?
Absolutely. So as I mentioned, I have nieces and nephews and children to each level of our fine school district, both high school at Pierce, as well as at Glover and other elementary schools. So I'm committed, I literally have family in each of those programs, and I want them all to succeed and do very well. We do not have any members currently in our family that live in Milton that go to private school. We are very much committed to the Milton Public Schools. My son Will is in co-taught, and one of my niece Emily went through co-taught. I think the co-taught is an excellent program. I think we've done a remarkable job, and as I think Superintendent Gormley has referred to it as the jewel of our program. I believe that to be true, too. I think it's an outstanding program where it makes both financial sense and also helps with the self-esteem of our young people. So I'm definitely a believer in that. And obviously, it is very well known that the French program is very well thought of by the community, as well as by national publications. And so that's been active for around twenty-five years now, and it's clear that that's here to stay. So we need to make sure that we're committed to each of those three programs, that each get well-resourced. And to add to that, I think we also should consider augmenting the programs with STEM. I think science, technology, engineering, and mathematics need to be more and more emphasized. I think that's an area we should look to in the future as well. But as a basic matter, I think each of our programs are important, and I think each of our schools are important. The school committee and others did a remarkable job in giving the amazing resources we have here. We have wonderful new facilities. And we need to take advantage of that using the passionate teachers that we have. I think we have a very dedicated staff at each of the levels. And we would be ashamed that because of either financial resources or perhaps alternatively through perhaps division amongst families, that we lose some people to other locations. I will also say that I'm also in charge of human resources at my company and have been for a number of years at other companies. And you often have to take a balanced approach to things. Oftentimes, an employee may come running in with an issue that very much is personal to them. And oftentimes, you really need to get to the bottom of the facts. I very much say, okay, thank you, and I listen. And then I reach out to our general counsel, our director of HR, and try to make sure that we gather all the facts before we make a decision. A lot of times, you want to react immediately to something, and you just can't do that. And that's, I'm sure, very true of the school committee. We all have constituents that have an agenda out there. And I think you just can't react to everything that comes up. And you need to be passionate, yet at the same time, under control, thoughtful, and make sure that you have all the facts before you act.
Well, I've made a career in human resources, so my heart goes out to you.
Do you have any questions for us?
What would make the ideal candidate to represent the seat that has been vacated by Mr. Cohen?
Personally, I think it's an interesting position because it's a ten-month position. You're jumping in, and you're basically holding on the fort until the next election in April. So just speaking for myself personally, I'm looking for someone who can really hit the ground running and jump right in. Because those of us who've been on here know that there's a long learning curve to this committee. And in ten months, there's not a lot of time for a long learning curve. So I'm looking for someone who has enough background that they can really jump in and accelerate that, personally. Any others want to jump in?
I think there are a number of things that are important. That's at the top of the list. This is, credit to all of my colleagues, this is a remarkably collaborative team. And that makes a big difference about how well we make decisions and how well we're able to support the leadership team. So the ability to work collaboratively is an important skill, I think. Record of involvement in the schools, someone that has already spent time demonstrating that, from a volunteer perspective, they are willing to get involved, willing to devote the time and have a good sense of the issues. I think some knowledge of the budget is important because that drives a lot of the decisions that we make. And the sooner you're up to speed on that, I think, the better. And then finally, the ability, as was represented by one of our questions, the ability to see the big picture. So I think that those four things are, for me, are very important. And I think there's never an ideal candidate, but I think the closer we get to that, the better.
Julio, do you want to say?
No, I think most of the things that I would say have already been said, actually. If I could just add, I think the things that look simple to folks, especially if they haven't been as involved in the school committee or other things, or that, they're not simple. There's lots and lots of layers to them, and it's a lot more complicated. And the schools are about the budgets. If we didn't have a budget, we wouldn't have schools. But schools and education are about heart and not just about budget. So for me, it's very important that folks get what we do here with kids. And we need the budget and we need all that, but it's about kids. And that's what has to come first for me with the ideal person, candidate.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You all put yours in order, didn't you?
Julio's.
Thank you.
Our next candidate is Julio Varela. Join us at the table, Julio.
Hey, guys. How are you?
Hello.
Good.
Nice to see you.
Our format is very simple. We have fifteen minutes tonight. We have about five questions. We have exactly five questions, in fact, for people, and an opportunity for you to ask us a question at the end. We are just doing interviews tonight. The joint meeting that we'll have with the selectmen to select someone will be next Tuesday. So that's what we're looking at tonight.
Okay.
And Mr. Walker is starting.
Welcome.
Hi, Mr. Walker.
Talk a little bit about why you're the best qualified candidate for this interim appointment.
Why am I the best qualified candidate? I have a very unique background in education on the curriculum side. For the last twenty-two years, I've been in the development of curriculum for learners at the K-12, specifically as a vice president of literacy for Houghton Mifflin-Hart Court. I've worked with Pearson, McGraw-Hill. I've worked on the software technology side. I've worked on the reading language arts side. I was actually, I actually helped develop the Common Core standards for reading at a time about two, two and a half years ago. So I know a lot of the issues that pertain to districts now in the 21st century in terms of not only the, in terms of the curriculum constraints and the challenges and the transitions. So taking that knowledge of education and the challenges that I've very familiar with, but also taking my knowledge as a resident of this town, as an active town meeting member, as a Little League coach, as a soccer coach, having been actively involved with my wife since we've been here in 2001. We also have two kids in the system. We have a wonderful daughter who will be entering seventh grade next year at Pierce, and a great, and my son who will be entering fourth grade in Colacott. We're deeply connected, at least I am, and just my family in general, deeply connected what the issues are going on in Milton Public Schools. I think it's a great system. I'm a huge supporter of public education. I'm a huge supporter of anyone that gives up their time, whether in elected position or volunteer position in this town. And I think I bring a fresh perspective in terms of how do you marry the challenges of town government with the number-one goal of any public school system is to create the greatest learners that you can for a town.
Great. Thanks, Julio. What do you see as the priorities of the school committee and the district in the next two years?
I see him a couple of them. I think, I'll approach it from the job of educating children. I do think we're in a very interesting transition in both as a nation, as a Commonwealth, and as a school district, where there's, where the entrance of technology and the challenges to make sure that all kids get high-quality education, that's a huge challenge that's happening. And I think there, I think we still have to keep the goal in mind on how we make sure that every kid that walks through this system gets the best opportunities to succeed. And that's, I know it's a very big blanket statement, but everyone, you know, there's ways to do it, whether it's in literacy coaches or in math coaches. I do believe that achieving that goal, putting kids first, is always the right thing to do. So from my perspective, that's the way I would approach this position. At the same time, I'm very aware of what, you know, the challenges of, you know, running, being a school committee member as part of town government. But I do believe that just the people that I know, I'm very in the loop with what the, what parents are saying and what they want out of their kids. I know there are going to be challenges, you know, but to me, it's always class size, best education. And there are going to be difficult decisions, too. I mean, reading what's going on with, you know, the French program and things like that. Those are things that need to get tackled within the context of how do you make, you know, how do you keep the excellence of Milton Public Schools at the level that you need to keep it at? So I hope that answered it.
Can you discuss your record of involvement in and support for the Milton Public Schools?
Wow. I think I've been supporting the Milton Public Schools even before my kids were in the system. I, you know, we came to this town in 2001. We looked into this town, you know, we knew that new schools were being built. There were challenges early, and we got involved. We got involved as preschool parents in 2004 and '05. And I had an opportunity to meet so many people that were so committed to this, you know, the school district, that I've been blessed to meet a lot of people, a lot of, you know, diverse people that actually have made me appreciate the town of Milton even more. So in terms of things that, in supporting the schools, I was also on the Milton Foundation for Education, I believe, for a year and a half. It was a good experience. I've, I learned a lot about the challenges of how to privately fund school, you know, how to enhance school offerings. I'm a big believer that that's a really, really good thing. But at the same time, I also believe that putting our efforts into the best possible core, you know, system, curriculum system, or how we teach our kids is more important than raising money. I think, I like to look at it from how do we make the system better? What do we look at ways? What are the challenges that teachers are facing? Whether it's, you know, transition from local standards to Common Core. MCAS is still an issue, but there's going to be new tests. There's going to be new assessments coming out. There's a growing, you know, teachers are, you know, teachers, you know, experienced teachers are phasing out. We have new teachers coming in. We need to have the best possible environment for these teachers to succeed with our kids. And I view, you know, my support of the Milton Public Schools comes from the fact that a high-quality education and an excellent system is the best reflection of a town. That's what I believe in. Because that's the best gift we can give this town is to make sure that we have just the greatest kids ever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My turn. What, Julio, what do you think the school committee's done well over the last three years? And what, if anything, could we do better?
Having followed the school committee for six or seven years, I do think that the level of communication has just been excellent the last couple of years. I do think that, but, you know, you're talking to a veteran that has gone to Citizens Speak in 2004 and has always got up here and interacted with the school. But I do think that in general, knowing what you guys do and knowing it from other ways as a town meeting member and talking to, you know, Warren Committee members, I do think the budget process the last couple of years. think the budget process, the last couple of years, I, it has been very, very good. I, I think, you know, it's been presented in the right way. It's been communicated in the right way. It's been communicated earlier. It's been talked about with parents. It's changed because of that. I do think that the communication is good. You know me, I always think communication can be better. I am incredibly responsive. Anyone who knows me of anything that I've done in the past, you know, people say, wow, Julio always gets back to me, whether it's via email or a phone call or a text or whatever, to the point of maybe a little bit maniacal, you know, that could be my fault. But I think, I would take this very seriously that if parents have issues, if they want to reach me, I would be responding and I would be calling them, talking to them and clarifying and inviting them to come and get involved. Because in a way, you know, the school committee is the, the leadership of the district, but it, but the district is all of us. I think we're a better district because we have very involved parents and I think that's, I think communication could always be better. And I think, I think the school committee maybe sells itself short a little bit sometimes in what it does. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't be bashful in, in celebrating the accomplishments of what we do well, because I think that's something that, you know, everyone, you know, in this day and age, public education is getting beaten to death. You know, we live in an era of cuts. We live in an era, an era of, you know, shrinking budgets. We live in an era of, you know, it's like kids not learning or, you know, and we forget that the best thing we can do is local, local involvement and making the best situation of what we have in front of us and trying to get all the noise away and say, you know, we have X number of kids and how are they doing and what do we need to do to make sure that every kid, every kid matters? So.
Thank you.
And that's what, I mean, I believe, that's what I do. So it's not like, I've been doing it since I was 21 years old and, you know, after a certain point, it's ingrained, you know, it's what you do. So that's my passion.
Thank you.
So I'm next in the question order, but I actually have a follow-up to that. So when you say communication could be better, talk a little bit more about that, better, more, more of it, different types of communication?
I think it's different now. I think, I think, for example, technological, you know, email only goes so far now. I think, you know, if, if, if I were to be chosen, I would look in ways for me to make myself more accessible to every town citizen, whether it is through my own personal webpage that, that people, you know, where I, I mean, I would love to share what's public of what we talk about, so it's not just on the school website, whether it's another phone number that goes through a message that I get, so it's not my home number. You know, there's, I, I wouldn't want to be accessible. I think that's, in this day and age, it's more about being responsive and how do you balance too much accessibility in a techno, technological world? But I think my private, you know, working in, in industry and, and having to deal with deadlines and also having to deal with school districts and getting back and, like, it's just, it's almost like second nature to me that if people have questions, I want to answer them immediately. And that, to me, is probably my biggest fault. So I try to, I get a little bit older and wiser as I, as I get, you know, as I, you know, my kids get, get older, so.
Well, if that's your biggest fault, you're in very good shape.
[laughing]
So here's my question. As some of us think about running for school committee, it is sometimes the case that that occurs because of a particular issue or set of issues that motivates us. But if we're fortunate enough to get elected, we learn very quickly that the role of a school committee member is much broader and much deeper than that. And you touched on some of this, but talk a little bit about how you would make sure that you represent every level of the system and every type of program that we offer. How do you make sure that, that you do that in a way that you're representing all of those programs, all of those constituencies?
I don't pretend to know everything and I ask a lot of questions. So from the edu, you know, the way I would frame understanding the entire system is to frame it in the context of how is this putting our kids in the position to become the best learners that they can possibly become? How is it in our position, you know? I, I'm a firm believer that every kid has the potential to knock it out of the park and do something that would blow, you know, blow all our minds away in, in all the good sense of that, that, that image. I would, I would ask a lot of questions, but I would frame it in the fact of, you know, when it's, you know, the learning experience, that's, that's what we do. The Milton Public Schools educates its, 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 you know, its non-voting, well, some of them are voting, its, its young citizens. And what does that mean? It means making sure that the right programs are in place. Are there redundancies? Are, are there things that are obstructing getting to, to, to student learning? That's the way I would frame it. That's, I come from a curriculum background. I come from a school district background. And I know the challenges that, that school districts face now.
Two minutes.
Yeah, so I, I, I'm not here to, to say that, you know, everything's perfect in this system, but I am here to question it in, within that context of, of questioning it for the pre-K to, you know, 12 world that we are in, you know, we've been entrusted to, to oversee. So that's what would drive me.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
No, I don't. [laughing] Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Julio.
Hey, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Julio.
Thanks.
Our next candidate is Brian Burns. If you'd join us at the table, please.
Two microphones.
Yeah, stereo. Our, our format is, is very simple. We have 15 minutes to interview each of the candidates tonight. We have a series of five questions for you and an opportunity for you to ask us a question afterwards. We're just doing interviews tonight. Our meeting with the selectmen is next Tuesday night, eight o'clock. That's where we'll be actually doing the, making the decision as to who sits in this seat for the next 10 months.
Great. Always wanted to try speed dating.
Mr. Walker.
So your first potential match is me. Brian, this is an opportunity for you to talk about yourself a little bit. Why are you the best qualified candidate for this interim appointment?
As I look at my background, and I know you've seen the letter, you know, I've been at Northeastern University for 25 years in a lot of different roles. You know, I have a business background, so I've spent some time in, in managing budgets and, and administration of the facilities. I have a legal background, so I've spent some time in the university council's office. I, I currently manage their compliance, their risk assessment, ERM, insurance and risk management efforts from an operational standpoint, and environmental health and safety. So I have a lot of varied experience as far as my work. You know, I have a marketing and management degree from Northeastern University and I have a Juris Doctorate from Suffolk University Law School. Growing up, my family was education. My father was a 33-year employee of the town of Watertown, where he was, in the last position he held, he was the principal of the, of the West Marshall School in Watertown. My mother was the secretary to the superintendent in Arlington for 25, 30 years. And most recently, my sister Denise served on the Arlington School Committee. So education, for me, is a passion. I'm engaged in the, in the town of Milton, in the youth of the town of Milton. I have three children, two of them in the school systems. I've been coaching in the Milton, in the Milton Recreation League, travel soccer, and in the Milton National Little League. It's all about the kids. And I think, you know, if you select me in this position, that you're going to end up with somebody who's willing to do the work that's necessary, that knows the commitment that's required of a school committee member, that understands how school systems work, and that has a passion for what I'm, what I will be working on. I think that the school committee can make the single greatest impact in the town. I think it's probably the hardest committee to work on because you have so many different emotional issues that, that come to your, come to your, into this room. But those aren't challenges that I'm afraid of. Those are challenges that I, that I rise to. And I think, you know, given the variety of my experience, given the passion that I do have for Milton and for the schools of Milton and for my own children and the children I've coached for the last eight, nine years, I think you'll find that, you know, I am the best candidate. And by the way, it's a tremendous pool.
Thanks. Brian, what do you see as the priorities for the school committee and the district in the next two years?
In the next two years, I mean, you know, I mean, I think the hot-button issue for everybody right now is the French-English student assignment issue. I think that's a hot-button issue, but I think, you know, for next year, it's going to be resolved very shortly, from what I heard at the last school committee meeting. And, but I think that has to be resolved going forward. I think we have to create some expectations so that parents can make some reasonable assumptions about where their children are going to be from year to year. I, I know that this year coming up, you have the, the teacher's contract that needs to be negotiated. I think Common Core curriculum is something else that's going to be implemented. I think you've got leadership transition in, in the high school, the middle school, and now one of the elementary schools. And as a matter of fact, in a second elementary school, you're going to have a principal nephew at the Glover taking a year, year's leave. So you do have some administrative transition. For me, looking at out further into the second year, I think it's really going to be budget. I think you're going to have to look at where you're spending your money and getting some consistency to, you know, there's not going to be any consistent to the resources, so you're going to have to make the most of the money that you do have. I think out of district, we've got to look at what we're spending on a, at the outer district level. We're currently, you know, at $67,000 per student out of district. If we could cut 10 of those, that's $670,000 that would be available for some of the areas that we have to put money into.
All right, so please discuss your record of involvement in and support for the Milton Public Schools.
Unfortunately, my wife has been doing most of that on, on my end. You know, I've, I've really supported the youth in, in my coaching and dedicating time that way. You know, I spend time at home with my children, doing their homework. I've interacted in the fall with the school department with some issues that we had with my son. But my wife has really been taking the lead as far as interacting with the schools and, and supporting the schools.
Okay, thank you. Number four, what do you think the school committee's done well over the last few years and what could we done better?
Hmm, that's a tough one. You know, I sat in a, in a budget meeting in this room, was it 2006, 2007? Might have been that far back. And there was no transparency to the budget process at that point in time. I think it was under Superintendent Cuffoon. I, you know, I came in and everybody was talking about, you know, their concerns over cutting teachers, cutting budget. We've just gone, you know, full tilt for overrides in the school system. And it was, it was a, it was a real emotional hot-button issue here in town, and I don't think there was a lot of transparency. From what I've looked at, as I've started to, to consider this, there's a tremendous amount of transparency right now. I think you've done a fabulous job. I think in looking at, you know, the direction that you've set for yourselves, I think if you look at the, I went through the minutes of the retreat that you had, you know, you've picked, you've picked several initiatives that are going to make a huge impact for the schools and improve what is, you know, what is already a great school system. I think you've got a strategic plan on the, on the board for a three-year strategic plan. I think that will create a lot of insight into what the schools can do better, what the administration can do better, and what the school committee can do better. I think you have a customer service model that you've talked about implementing across the schools. In my conversations with parents, one of the things that strikes me is so many people complain about the interaction that they've had, not about the issue, but the interaction that they've had. And I think, you know, having, having been in a household where you have a dad that's a principal, he's, you know, the teachers and the principals are with students, you know, from seven o'clock in the morning till three o'clock, 3:30 in the afternoon. And it's, it's a hard thing to do to, to maintain that customer service methodology. In Northeastern University, we, you know, 10, 15 years ago, we started looking at our customer service. How do you implement that? And what is, what is important in that? And it's just those little interactions that make so much of a difference in the way that people look at our schools. Teachers are making difficult choices every day and they're not always going to make choices that suit the parents well. Administration is making choices every day and they're not always going to suit the parents or the teachers well. But I think if we have that customer service approach, mutual respect for everybody, communication, I think that will go a long way. So I think you've set a good direction to make some real impact.
Thank you.
Brian, as, as we think about running for a school committee seat, that is often motivated by our, our interest in a particular issue or set of issues. But if we're fortunate enough to get elected and we realize very quickly that the responsibility that school committee members has or have is much broader and much deeper than that. Talk a little bit about your, how you would approach that responsibility and making sure that you represent every level of the school system, the broad range of programs that, that we offer and, and making sure that you're doing that in a way that's balanced and, and represents all of those different constituencies.
I'm glad you asked that that way.
Great.
I, I'm not in this for a particular issue. You know, I have a catalyst that prompted my interest, that, that, you know, raised my awareness. But if I'm here to change one thing, that's not going to be a good use of your time, of my time, of the town's time. I'm here because I can see that Milton Schools is on the precipice of going into doing better things, greater things. They've, they're doing great things, you know? But there's an opportunity here for an individual who can make a difference, who can add something to the mix of this committee that will begin a, a change that's going to impact the way the schools are run for the next 15, 20 years. That's a great opportunity. That's what I'm here for. I see this as that. I also see this in, in reality. You know, there were 11 people sitting in that room with me tonight. This might be a nine-month appointment. So over the next nine months, I think the direction the school committee has set is a great, you know, is a great start. And I think beyond that, I'm going to work as hard as I can because the better the school systems are, the better my kids' education is, the better my property value is, the better the social aspects of this community can be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
No. I, you know, I've had the opportunity to, you know, to speak with Superintendent Gormly. You know, I, I really do appreciate the issues that the town is, the town is facing, the school districts are facing. And I think there are opportunities here to work on, work collectively and collaboratively with everybody involved.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
[inaudible]
Getting cold?
Oh, I'm fine. It'll keep me awake.
It's a public room.
I'm cold, but it'll keep me awake. I don't mind being cold. I look a little silly.
And I think there are opportunities here to work collectively and collaboratively with everybody involved.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Are you getting cold?
Oh, I'm fine. It'll keep me awake. I'm cold, but it'll keep me awake. I don't mind being cold. I look a little silly. I understand, but I look like it's winter time. I was out in the rain a lot today, running around. We're doing very well in time, right?
Really well.
I'm delayed. I put my time down. No one's, like, not everyone's using.
Excellent. Excellent.
Our next candidate is Becky Bedera. And our format is very simple. We have 15 minutes to interview each of our candidates. We have five questions for you and an opportunity for you to ask a question to us. We're just interviewing tonight, and our meeting with the selectmen to choose someone to be appointed to this position is next Tuesday night. So that's just the process in a nutshell.
Okay.
That's the right answer. First question goes to Mr. Walker.
Welcome, Becky.
Welcome. Thank you.
Talk about why you're the best qualified candidate for this interim appointment.
Well, I don't know what the other candidates, all their backgrounds are, but currently I do have elementary-age students, which I think is, on the school committee board, there isn't anyone with that. I also have a school background. I was a guidance counselor for 10 years in Arlington. And I coached there as well. A little bit of a sports and wellness background there. I also, when I was working at Arlington Catholic, I had a great experience working on leading the steering committee for the accreditation process. It was, I was selected by the vice principal to do that, and it was a great experience of working with teachers, administration, and developing the document which goes out, which was, as you all know, a lengthy and sometimes difficult contentious process, but it was a great experience for me. And after that, after I was no longer working at home with my kids, I have volunteered a lot with the Milton Schools as a PTO president at Glover and serving on the hiring committee for the Glover principal job, where I've met, you know, some of you and worked with the superintendents, which was a great process. I guess I feel I'm a really strong candidate because I have a lot of great experiences. And because of those great experiences, I have a really positive outlook on Milton Public Schools and, you know, without a real agenda, I just want to help out and serve, you know, in a greater capacity. And I think I'm pretty, have some good experience working with some of you and can judge by that.
Great. Thanks, Becky. What do you see as the priorities for the school committee and the district over the next two years?
The priorities? Well, I think that in going into it, you know, from my outside experience, one of the things, and one of the reasons I've kind of stepped forward is that I think it should be a priority to really try to pull more people into the process in a positive level with younger children and even children before they're entering the school system. Because my experience has been fantastic, and I would like to see more people have that same experience because I think they're your greatest supporters and the greatest asset you have. When you have young children, you tend to be a lot more involved in what's happening in their educational experience. And so they want to get involved. And if we can kind of pull those kind of people in to gain their support and their, also their experiences, that would be great. And, you know, other priorities would be just, because that's going to be where your, you know, budgetary sport comes from. And a lot of things are, you could say everything, like you want lower class sizes and you want an aquatic center out there, but if you don't have the money, it's hard to do that. So gaining more and more people's support, especially new people that live in Milton and don't know what's going on, you know, trying to get more of those people out, that would be priority one for me, from my experience.
Can you discuss your record of involvement in and support for the Milton Public Schools?
Yes, I would love to do that. So I touched a little bit. I was, I started off in, as a PTO president. Right before that, actually, I was, served on one of the precinct, as one of the precinct captains for the override, which was, you know, as all volunteer jobs come, just kind of, I was the one that showed up. But it was a great experience, and I met a lot of people that, you know, I think when you're an elementary parent, you kind of tend to hang around elementary parents. I met a lot of people that have been doing this for a while, and that was a great experience because it wasn't just all about my issues, but about things that they were thinking of too and what they had already been through and learned from, you know, their experiences. And then I started as the PTO president for two years at Glover. And that was a fantastic experience, the meeting with the superintendents every month and seeing really what they go through. It's not, you know, making decisions isn't always easy and you don't please all the people and understanding where those decisions came from. So that was, this year I have not, I continue to serve on the PTO as a volunteer, but I've missed a lot of that, which is part of the reason, coming forward, kind of missed that involvement and input.
Becky, what do you think the school committee's done well over the last couple of years and what do you think we could do better?
Well, I think that, I think the school committee, going to the, each of the school meetings and being there and being open to discussion and presenting what issues they face, especially making cuts for the budget, things like that. I think they've been a lot, since I've been here anyway, very approachable on that sense and very good at explaining what kind of difficulties you face in the budget process and in enrollment processes, things like that. So I think in terms of doing better, it would just be an expansion of that, of really reaching out to parents almost before things, you get the bad news. Like kind of things, this is kind of the start of things, what things are going on. And, you know, some of the positive news is good to make your first impression. So that would be what I would think could improve upon, I guess.
Thank you.
Becky, sometimes we're motivated to run for school committee because of a particular issue or a set of issues. But if we're fortunate enough to get elected, we realize very quickly that what perhaps got us there is not what's going to allow us to do well. Talk a little bit about how you would approach this very broad responsibility of having to represent every level of the school system, the broad range of programs that we offer, and making sure that you do that in a balanced way. How do you, how would you approach that?
Well, I think one of the reasons I think I would be a good candidate is I have a very open mind, and I think a lot of people that know me would say I have an overwhelming kind of positive attitude. I tend to think very positively. But I have always been really good at dealing with all opinions and being open to all opinions. And I think that's what's important to do, that just because I'm coming from a certain experience and direction, there's a reason that other people feel a different way, and it's important to listen to where that's coming from and try to represent what's best for everyone as a whole and what's best for the school system as a whole. So I think that's what I would do, continue to do, is just really try to figure out where someone else's perspective is coming from and make the best decision for the school system as a whole, with that in mind.
Thanks.
Do you have any questions for us?
Well, I guess if I still have enough time, I would just like to ask, you know, the school committee is obviously, from what I've seen on your programs, a lot of work for each of you. And there are a lot of arguments that can be pretty stressful to handle and issues that come up. I just would wonder if, what, if you could each share, like, what you think, like, the most positive thing about serving would be.
I'll go first. Yeah, for me, it's giving back, number one. And number two, just the people that you meet. It's awesome, like, great that you have elementary kids, but I, my kids are out of college. So I get to meet people in this community that I wouldn't otherwise meet. So I'm thrilled that, you know, that presents that opportunity for me.
I think it's a great way to serve the town, but I, I think that it is, the thing that's so sobering about the responsibility is that you realize you can have a significant impact on a lot of people's lives and a lot of kids' lives. And that's both quite rewarding, but quite sobering at the same time.
I think, for me, I'll let you go last, please. I think for me, it's about a passion for education for kids, elementary, middle, and high school. And I will tell my kids when I go home that I don't have to be responsible for their education warrants. My son goes off to college and he's agreeing with me. But from elementary to middle to high school, there's just so much of a push as a parent to do what's really best for my kid. And I mean that for the whole school system. If it's not good enough for my kid, it's not good enough for anybody's kid, no matter if I work in Boston, Milton, live here, whatever. It has to be good for all kids, and that's what I feel very passionate about. It's got to be the best thing for every single kid that walks through this door.
Yeah, I think the passion for education is what really unites, you know, a lot of people on the committee. It's, you know, the three of us is what we do professionally. I mean, this is, this is our whole life is education. And to be able to get the large perspective of it from a school committee perspective and see, try to see everything that's going on in a town and everything, all the various different ways it interacts, as opposed to, you know, in your own personal life where you see what you do. To have the really broad picture here is really amazing, actually. Despite the work, I mean, it's, you know, community service has that, has that advantage to it. As you, sometimes you learn things you don't want to know. But, you know, it is, it is a really amazing perspective to see all the different things that happen.
Great. Thank you for this opportunity.
Well, thank you.
I really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks, Becky.
I'm going to get the next person, which will give me the opportunity to take a quick break.
Mary Sorengov.
All right, I'll be right back.
Should we take a one-minute break then? I'll go to ladies room, too.
Sure. Not to scare you, but we're going to take a one-minute break, but come join us anyway, Chuck.
Hi, Chuck.
How are you?
Good, how are you? What was your favorite part of the weekend? Because you were at the fireworks parade.
You know, I got to say, I loved the parade. And we, you know, we got a great spot. We were under a tree, right in front of Colicot, so we were in the shade. And it was just great. I mean, the fireworks are great, too, but I really enjoyed the parade.
You think it was the biggest one we've ever had?
It's the only one I've ever been to, so it was, it was long, you know? It was great.
We rehearsed it all.
I know. We're live. They're just telling us that we are live. I just thought that we would chat to, while we're there. That's okay. And the weather held out for us.
The weather held out, and I think one of the great things about the parade, there were so many kids in it. So, you know, my kids saw their friends, and it was, it was exciting.
I think half the town was in the parade and then half watched us.
Yep.
It was fun.
Well, I hope you get to rest this weekend.
We could go for some water.
Yeah.
Sorry about this.
No problem.
Sorry, the camera's on us.
I know. Intermission.
It's all right. We're just about ready, huh?
Why don't you explain the timing and everything, what was, the way we're going to do this?
Chris, can you get back? I don't want to finish before she gets there.
I could ask some of the history book questions while I'm break.
I couldn't make the history book. How was it?
Maybe this one, down in there.
There's one in the candidate's room. Sorry, it was my fault. I asked for a short break, but...
You guys deserve it. No worries.
All right, well, thank you for obliging us for a short break.
You're welcome.
Our next candidate is Chuck Karimbakis. We have a 15-minute interview that we're doing with everyone. We have five questions for everyone and an opportunity for you to ask us a question at the end. We're just doing interviews tonight, and our meeting with the selectmen to choose an interim member of the school committee is next Tuesday night. So that's the short version of the process.
Great.
So Mr. Walker has his question.
I do, but I, I'd like for you to help us a little bit first with, since I'm, my name is Leroy and 90% of the people I meet call me Leroy, I want to make sure, since we're going to be saying your name quite a bit, that we know exactly how it's pronounced. Is it Karimbakis?
It's Karimbakis.
Karimbakis, okay. Got it. Talk a little bit about why you're the best qualified candidate for this interim appointment.
Sure. At first, I think if selected, I would be the only member with elementary-school-aged children, which I think is an important voice to be heard on the committee. Second reason is I have two children in elementary school. I'm a graduate of public schools. My wife... my wife is a proud graduate of, of the Milton Public Schools, and we are committed to a public school education. We have a vested interest in the academic success of all the schoolchildren here in Milton, and, and we would be fully committed. Professionally, I have extensive experience in budget and finance, I think that could be a valuable asset during the budget process here in the town. I've demonstrated my commitment to the, to the public schools, specifically, I'm a member of the Collicott PTO leadership team, I'm the treasurer-elect for next year, and so I think, not only interested in the, the well-being of the school, I've actually worked hard to try to make it better. And finally, I'm a team player, I work on, I work on teams at work, I lead teams, I like to build consensus and collaborate, and, and finally, I am, I do work in, for a quasi-public agency. I understand how the public process works. I sit where the superintendent and her staff sit at board meetings as professional senior staff, so I know how to interact with the board, I know how to try to manage a board, and so I think that could be valuable being on the other side, and I think, I think those are my major assets.
Thank you.
Thanks. Chuck, what do you see as the priorities for the Milton Public Schools and the district for the next two years?
Well, continued academic excellence, obviously, I know that the high school was just reaccredited, so that was, that was important. You know, I, I think MCAS scores through all different types of folks, special education students, you know, regular students, people, children in the French program, and then in the middle school, high school, I think that's a priority that needs to be, I think there's been great strides made, but I think they, they, they need to be kept up, so I think that's a priority that needs to be, to be worked on. And two, one of the, one of the issues that I'm interested in, and I haven't seen data on, is, is, and I've, but I've seen in, in the press, and I've heard the principal say, trying to keep students in the public schools, and, and try to keep our best students in the public schools and away from going to private school, and so I'm, I'm interested in that issue, and I think, I think I'd like to look at data and see why people leave, and, and what we could do to, to try to keep them here, because I think that makes a better sense of community.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
The follow-up, you said something about we've made great strides, I think in the French immersion program and in our special ed program, is that what?
I've just seen MCAS scores.
MCAS scores?
In, in, you know, I focus, obviously, at the Collicott School, and so those, those scores have improved dramatically, and I think it's been a great effort from all the teachers, but I, I think we need to keep it up and, and focus on some of the areas that, that maybe need more work, I think, as I read, maybe in the middle school, and in that area.
And I just didn't understand what you meant by the French immersion and the special ed related to that.
I was just, I was listing all the programs.
Oh, okay, I, I just didn't, I didn't notice, okay, thank you.
Could you discuss your record of involvement in and support for the Milton Public Schools?
Sure, I touched on that a little bit in the beginning, I'm on the PTO, this is my first year on the PTO, we call it our leadership team, and I, I will be the treasurer next year, full-time. I think one of the things that, you know, that we really worked on as a team was technology at the Collicott School, trying to get smart boards in all of the classrooms, I know they're in all the classrooms in the middle school and high school, and so we were lucky enough to have some reserves built up over time, and so we, we educated, you know, parents and teachers, and we got input from the principal, and, and we really focused on technology as an important use of these extra funds, and so we, you know, purchased smart boards, and just recently, we've had a fundraiser to raise more funds, to try to, try to get them in all the, all the classrooms.
Thanks. What do you think the school committee has done well over the last couple of years, and what do you think we could improve in? Oh, it says last three years, but last couple of years.
Couple, a couple things that I've really enjoyed, or that I thought were helpful as a, as a parent and being on the PTO, is during budget time, you're making yourself available to the PTOs around town, and explaining the budget process. I think explaining, the chair was at the, the Collicott this year, explaining the stretch budget and what that meant, and what all the ramifications were if, if funding didn't come in, I thought that was very helpful as a parent. It, it showed the availability of the committee, and, and really the education that went both ways, from parents and PTO members to the committee, and then, and vice versa. I also, something I wasn't involved in, but I did read, I, I thought that the, the World Language Committee report and the whole process was a very valuable process, I think it showed, I think it allowed parents and teachers and administrators to work together and have everyone's voice heard, and then there was a document that you could refer to, that, that had all the processes and procedures, and I thought that was a, a really good tool, and I think it showed, you know, transparency, and it showed availability, and really listening to parents, and trying to involve everybody.
Thanks.
You know, I, I would just say, things to improve on, or, you know, I would say the, the third thing I, I've observed at meetings is, you know, how the administration and the committee get along, and it seems like it's constructive criticism, a good back-and-forth on ideas, and so that shows to parents, and I think, I've been really heartened to see principals move up to, you know, the middle school principal becoming the high school principal, the elementary school principal becoming the middle school principal, so it shows that people want to, teachers want to work here, principals want to work here, there's a good relationship all up and down, you know, from the school committee down. I would say, you know, the improvement is just keep, keep up the transparency, keep up the availability, so, you know, I think parents will feel like their concerns are heard.
Thank you.
Chuck, how would you, as a, as a school committee member, how would you make sure that you represent every level of the system, the parents and children who are touched by the broad range of programs that we offer, and how would you make sure that you do that in a balanced way?
I, I think that being available, and it's, with technology today, that is a lot easier, so, you know, responding to emails, responding to telephone calls, you know, being at events to see people at town-wide events, games, three-hundred-fiftieth year celebration, et cetera, and I think it's being open to hear all perspectives, and, and be data-driven, and, and not have a preconceived judgment on what the right decision should be for any, you know, on, on, on any issue, and I think, you know, that comes out in, in the meetings here, a lot of discussion, it's a lot of extra work, but, you know, pushing the administration to get information out to the board, to, to help inform decisions.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
What, what are some of the harder, what, what, what do you think the hardest decisions to make are on the school committee?
The hardest?
The most difficult. Is it personnel, is it budget?
I think they're interrelated. For me, probably cutting teachers, and that impact children in teaching and learning.
Yeah, cutting, cutting staff, both having been cut myself in public education, and then knowing class sizes are gonna go up, and knowing that people's lives are impacted, and that everybody's kids' lives are impacted, that's really, really difficult to do.
Good question.
Yeah, the, uh...
It's, um, go ahead, Claire.
Go ahead. Yeah, I, I think there's a, you're working in a, in a financial environment, especially in the last few years, that is problematic, and on the one hand, you recognize what you really need to do for the kids, and you recognize that sometimes you can't always do what you really need to do for them, given the resources, and, and that's, that's troubling, I mean, more so than anything else, is to know, you know, to somehow know that this is what we really should be doing, but right at the moment, we're not gonna be able to do that, and so, you know, you're trying to figure out how you can preserve that so you can get there, knowing that, you know, you can't get there when you want to.
I, I would say something very similar, it's hearing about the various programs that we have, and how important they are to particular students, and how a particular program, music, art, changes a kid's life, and realizing that, and we're in an environment where we don't have the resources to do everything we need to do, but wanting to make sure that every kid gets the best possible education, so it's a, it's a constant balancing act.
I'd say one other thing, and that is charging fees in public education. I have, you know, philosophical challenges with that, but it's inevitable to get, get the work done, so.
Good point.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thanks for your time.
Our next candidate is Meg Kasuba. Join us at the table.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
We are doing, as you would have guessed by now, fifteen-minute interviews, we have five questions that we'll be asking, an opportunity for you to ask us a question at the end. This is only interviews tonight, our meeting with the board of selectmen to choose a candidate will be next Tuesday.
Okay.
So, that's the, the short version. And Mr. Walker has the first question.
Welcome, Meg.
Thank you.
So, a, a good opening question, an opportunity to talk about yourself a little bit. Why are you the best qualified candidate for this interim appointment?
Why am I the best qualified candidate? I, I feel like I would be a good candidate, I am passionate about the schools, and I'm a self-proclaimed teacher fan. I think that, just given my own family's experience in the Milton schools, I've come to realize just how important a school system is. I came from a background of twelve years of, of private school, a Catholic school, I had really very little experience in the public schools, and I, I feel like the Milton schools have given so much to my family that I feel like this is almost my opportunity to give back. I've had three children go through the schools, one, my youngest, will be a senior next year, which is hard to believe, and my, my middle son actually has required a lot of special education services, and I feel like because of that, I've had a very different experience, not that my other kids haven't had a wonderful experience, and I have felt connected for them, but I think when you have a child with needs, your connection is that much greater, and...
Amazing candidates we have.
Yeah, a lot of good people, very good. And the next step in the process, can I ask this while we're waiting?
Sure.
We meet Tuesday night.
Tuesday night.
So we have discussion Tuesday night.
Right.
And do we know how we're doing the voting yet?
I'm calling people's names, and they're gonna tell me who they're voting for.
Okay. So you can vote more than once.
Well, we're gonna, we'll, we'll do a vote, if we don't have five, we'll have to do another vote, and we just keep going and refining ourselves. Great, our next candidate is Veronica Grammas. Please join us, right there. Welcome.
Hi.
What we have, after your seemingly infinite wait, is a fifteen-minute interview, we have five questions for you, and a, a chance for you to ask a question of us. We are interviewing tonight, our meeting with the board of selectmen is next Tuesday night to choose an interim, interim replacement for the school committee.
Great.
So, that's the process, and Mr. Walker has the first question.
Welcome.
Hi, Mr. Walker.
Thanks for waiting.
It was fun. I actually had a book. I was the only one that was relaxed, I was reading the whole time, so I'm fine.
Talk a little bit about why you're the best qualified candidate for this interim appointment.
I'm an educator. I have been in the field of education since nineteen eighty-seven. I've taught everything from preschool to PhD candidates, so I know a lot about education. I've also worked in a immersion program, so I know the politics of immersion, I know some of the ins and outs, that maybe some of the other candidates might have understanding through their own children, but not necessarily from the point of view of administration or teachers. I am interested in this work, I've served on school-side councils, I've worked with Mary on the committee when we were trying to restructure the school district, so I'm comfortable working with you guys, and, you know, working in the school setting, and I really enjoy doing this work, I think it's very important work, I think it's important for the schools, I think it's important for the town, and I think it's important to have somebody who really knows about education doing this.
I'm just gonna ask a follow-up on that, sorry. You said you've worked in, in another immersion program, which...
I worked in California in an immersion program for five years, I was a teacher there, and I was a mentor there as well. It was a Spanish immersion program, but the model is very similar to what we use here in Milton, and I have a, an advanced degree, one of my advanced degrees is in bilingual education, which is why I did an immersion program.
So Veronica, now my real question for you, sorry. What do you see as the priorities of the Milton Public Schools and the, I'm sorry, the school committee and the district in the next few years?
I think one of our biggest priorities is to figure out how to make this immersion program work in a way that the people in the town feel comfortable with. I think we're, we're in for a, a political nightmare, and I think we really need to think about how are we going to do this in the way that serves the needs of our students without driving everyone crazy, and I think that's gonna be very hard, and I, I, I think it's important that we learn, that we figure out how to do this, we look to some of the other immersion programs, how did they take care of these things, and, and try to do this in the best way possible, because I just see this as huge, I mean, we've been fermenting this discontent about immersion, about the French program, ever since it started, and the problems have been there since the beginning, so we need to figure out a way to make this work for the town, because it's a huge part of the town, that's one thing. Another is financially, how do we make sure that we meet our financial responsibilities? And make sure that our, that the high school does not get into the position where we lose certification, accreditation, rather, accreditation, I think that that's important as well. We didn't receive the best reports, and I think it's important that we make sure that we firm up the high school in such a way that we continue on the right track, so I think those are probably the three most important things for me.
Can I ask a follow-up question? When you said we, what would we, what would you do to make the French immersion program work? You said you had some ideas about that.
I don't know. I, I mean, I do know, but I think I'd have to know what other people are thinking, and what's already going, what's on the table. I think this is going to blow up in our faces if we don't have a rationale behind that. You know, what happens if somebody doesn't get into the lottery? You know, what are we gonna, it's just, it's gonna be complicated, and I think we need to know that whatever we do, people are going to be unhappy. So what are we gonna do to make as many people happy as possible? And I do think it's a political issue. I mean, the academics, the writing about the programs is absolutely flawless. We know that it is one of the best ways to educate children. So we know that the theory behind it is strong. So now it's just a matter of, you know, what do we do with the students in the schools that don't get into the program if their parents want them to? What happens if we get rid of an English classroom and parents want an English classroom? What if you have to move to a different school to be in the program you want to? Parents don't want that either. All of those are the issues that we're going to be dealing with.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you discuss your record of involvement in and support for the Milton Public Schools? I know you've answered some of that.
I've been pretty involved. We moved here in 1997. My daughter started the elementary school five years later, because I moved here when I was expecting my oldest child. She started, she was in the Cunningham School, and I think I joined the school council, the schoolside council, when she was in kindergarten. So I was involved with a schoolside council at Cunningham from kindergarten until, I think, maybe third, fourth, fourth grade. Like I said, I've served on a couple of committees with the school, with the school committee, the committee that we did, that we were trying to do the restructuring for the school district. That was one of them. I think I also served on one that we talked about, bilingual education. And then I also served, I think, on the committee where we hired the former superintendent, whose name now, I can't remember her name.
Dr. Jafoni?
Yes, Dr. Jafoni. I think I was on the, in fact, I was on that committee. So those are some things I've done. I also am a volunteer in the classroom. I run the Meet the Artist program at Cunningham. And I, you know, I do what I can. I'm always, I'm always at the schools.
Thanks. Oh, I'm sorry. My question, what has the School Committee done well over the last couple of years, and what could we have done better?
You've done a lot of things well. I think you guys have negotiated waters very, very well. Let me try to think of some specific examples. Well, I think you did a very good job of figuring out the superintendency and how to move from one superintendent to the other. And you negotiated, you know, Dr. Jafoni, she had a thankless job while she was here. It was very difficult. And I think you picked the right candidate to do that, because she really was very good at what she did. I think also you've done a very good job of keeping the schools moving in the right direction. I think a lot of people are concerned that the town's schools will go down in quality. When we got the money to rebuild the schools, I think we did, you guys did a wonderful job selecting architects and selecting people to do the actual work in the school. The schools look beautiful. You couldn't have done a better job. I'm proud to bring people through the schools these days. It's just amazing. So you've done an amazing job, and I really can't tell you anything I don't think you've done well. I mean, it's a, it's a hard, it's a hard thing. It's a hard job, and I think you've done a very good job doing it.
Thank you.
So Veronica, you realize very quickly as a School Committee member that the responsibilities are quite broad and quite deep.
Yeah.
How do you make sure that you're representing every level of the school system, the programs that touch so many different types of students with so many different needs? How do you make sure that you do that in a way that represents everyone?
I think the biggest part is being involved, and I stay involved in the schools. I have a daughter that's a rising freshman, so I'm finally going to be involved in the high school. I can't wait. I'm thrilled that Mr. Jett is coming up with us, because I already know him, and he knows me, so hopefully we'll be able to get more involved now and have four more years with him. Karen, Karen Spalding is moving up to Pierce. My son will be moving up to Pierce in two years, so I know her. So I think the actual schools themselves, I've also, my son was at Glover for a year, and CalaCott is right next door, and my kids' classrooms are actually in CalaCott, so I know, and I know, now, he left, didn't he, our CalaCott principal, who I loved, because he was the Cunningham CalaCott principal, but I knew him as well. So the only principal I don't know right now is the new Tucker principal. But you're bringing back, aren't you bringing back, the one who was the principal at Tucker is now going to be the principal at Glover? And I know him, because I served on a committee with him. So I think I know people. I know people, and I've worked with these people, and I like to be involved, and I like to know what's going on in the schools, and I keep abreast of what's going on. And I think that's the most important thing, is you need to have a voice. You need to know what's going on, and you need to be interested. And, very important, you need to have the time to do this. I don't know what you guys do for a living, but I am, right now, pretty much a stay-at-home mom, so I have time to devote to this, because of that I've been able to do a lot of volunteer work. So I have time to devote to this and interest to devote to this. I am not going to be running home from the law office, running late, trying to come to these meetings.
Two minutes.
Thank you.
Great.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, I don't, unless you have any other, like, personal questions for me, things that you might want to ask me that aren't on the list.
And we're sticking with our list.
You're sticking with your list, that's wonderful.
I did want to clarify, though, if it's okay.
Sure.
You did mention something about the high school accreditation, but we actually did very well on this last high school accreditation.
Yeah, there was...
I just, since we're on camera, I just wanted to be clear that...
Yeah, there was, there were a couple areas where we didn't do well. We did very well for the most part, you're right.
Yes, and that's just important for people, parents at the high school and upcoming parents, to know that...
To know.
We're in good shape with the accreditation process. Always room for improvement, but in good shape.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Is it still raining?
What?
Is it still raining?
I don't know.
Still raining?
Is it? Just curious.
I don't know. I can't see.
You can't tell when you're up here if it's raining or not.
Who wants a weather report?
Well, we could ask Frank, or, you know.
Right.
All right. And the person who is unfortunate enough to draw the short straw and be the last to have to wait through this entire process is Mike Chinman, who is our final candidate this evening. Have a seat.
Hi, Kristen Baggy-Jones.
Nice to meet you.
How you doing?
Our process is, we have fifteen minutes to interview individuals. We have five questions for you and an opportunity for you to ask a question of us. We're interviewing tonight. Our meeting with the Selectmen to choose an interim School Committee member is actually next Tuesday night. So that's the process we're doing tonight.
Okay.
So Mr. Walker has the first question.
Welcome, and thanks for your patience. Talk a little bit about why you're the best qualified candidate for this interim appointment.
I'm the best qualified candidate sitting in this chair right now. That's the most that I can say to you. I haven't been in this room while you've interviewed the others. I know that they're all very accomplished. We were chit-chatting back there during the hours, and I salute anyone who's running for this and willing to put themselves on the line and answer your questions and be before the town as a candidate. I wouldn't presume to say that I'm the best qualified compared to them. And I'm not sure, with all due respect, that that's your task, to find the best qualified candidate. I think that your task is to find the person with the clarity of message and motive for running that will enhance this committee. I think it's a difficult task, and it does not carry the imprint that the voters place on somebody when they select that person in an election. So I think whoever you pick is going to be at a bit of a disadvantage compared to the four of you who have all been elected to the committee. I think it's fortunate that it's less than a year, in that the person who is selected can either run or be replaced by somebody who's going to be elected. So I trust the voters to choose the best qualified candidate. I'm not sure that your task is the same as the voters', and I do have a message of transparency being the most important thing that I would bring to the School Committee, is my emphasis. I believe firmly that the decisions of this committee, the decisions of the administration will be better decisions, will be good decisions. The more transparent this process is, the more voices that are brought into the process, the more inclusive the decision-making is. And with all due respect, I think this committee has sometimes dropped the ball on that. I think transparency has not always been what it should be. That's really what motivated me to put my name in. So I do have experience with the open meeting law, enforcing it. I do have a firm belief in the importance of transparency, and I do have disappointment in what I've seen in past practices of the School Committee. So I will emphasize that. I'm not a bomb-thrower. I believe in consensus, and I think working as a group, being inclusive, is an important skill and an important criteria for you in selecting the next person, and that is my aim.
I think you've got some valuable ideas, although I would say that I think we're in a better position to define what our task is.
I'm sorry, Mr. Walker, I can't hear you.
I said, I think you have some valuable ideas, but I do want to take issue with one thing you said. I think we're in a better position to define what our task is than you are, so, but thanks for the opinion.
Well, that's what I'm here to tell you.
Okay.
So, Michael, the next question is, what do you see as the priorities for the School Committee and the district for the next two years?
Well, you know, I think the school district, led by the policies of the School Committee, has a task that I want to say is an enviable task. There's always problems, this is a good problem to have, but dealing with the French and English program is something that must be addressed, and capping it, I think, is a temporary fix that is not long-term. I say it's a good problem to have, because it's a problem that results because of a fantastically popular and successful French program. If there's any suggestion by anybody that the solution is to diminish, get rid of, the French program, I think that person is, good luck to them when they face the voters with that position, it seems to me. The French program is wildly successful. It needs to be nurtured, and, which you can't solve this problem of it being so popular that there's, it's all out of whack with the English program by capping it. Just to give you an example, there's someone down the street from me that's moving. I'm not saying it was the only reason, but it certainly was a reason that they expressed is because their young child, they wanted to be into the French program, and they don't want to risk the chance that she won't be selected if the French program is capped. That's just one example of a detrimental effect of capping the program. But more importantly, the reasons why people are favoring the French program compared to the English program need to be addressed. And I think that's a challenge for the school district. I think there has to be a better job of selling the English program, and I think it's possible that there may be measures needed to be implemented to make the English program have an appeal, just as the French program has an appeal of learning a foreign language. Up till now, I think there's been a pretty big emphasis on keeping the two programs just the same, except once in French and once in English. It may be necessary, because the selection of the parents is out of whack, to make the English program more appealing. There's many different ways to do that. So I think that will be a challenge in the next couple of years.
Thanks.
Could you discuss your record of involvement in and support for the Milton Public Schools?
Well, today, I have finished forty-one school years of experience as a Milton Public Schools parent. My two high schoolers, this today was their last day, and I was thinking, it's actually, if you count the preschool program at the high school, you gotta bump that number up by two, because my twins attended preschool there. So I've been involved as a parent. My kids have done, I can't even remember all the activities in sports, and it's really awe-inspiring to me, what they've accomplished. My oldest son was in the jazz band. I'm trying to push my youngest daughter to try out for jazz band, because I really want to attend those concerts again. What they accomplished on the athletic fields, what they accomplished in chorus, what they accomplished in band, in jazz band. And, you know, I care about the Milton Public Schools. I volunteered to be the coach for the high school mock trial team, which, you know, went to the competitions with them this year. It was really exciting when they beat, I'm trying to remember the school they beat. I can't, the competition was in the Newton, I think it was the City Hall. It wasn't a real courtroom, but it looked like one. It was a historic building, and that's a phenomenal learning experience for the kids. So as a parent, as a volunteer, and as someone appreciates what Milton Public Schools offers to the kids, I've been very involved.
Thank you. The next question is, you talked a little bit about some of this already, but what do you think the School Committee's done well over the last few years? And then you've shared with us some things we could have done better. I don't know if there are other things to share as well. So what we've done well and other things we may have done better, could have done better.
Well, look, you know, Milton High School was just selected on that list of, I forget what the list was called, but you know the one I'm talking about in The Washington Post, the top school, high schools in the country for emphasizing college testing. You gotta give kudos to the school department, and if you're giving kudos to the school department, you gotta give kudos to this committee for the accomplishments of the Milton Public Schools. It is an excellent school system, and that's why people move here and continue to live here. And, you know, the voters support the public schools, because they believe in the public schools, and that is a lot due to the work of this School Committee, which includes... Well, look, you know, Milton High School was just selected on that list of, um, I forget what the list was called, but you know the one I'm talking about in the Washington Post? The top school, high schools in the country for emphasizing college testing. Um, you, you gotta give kudos to the school department, and if you're giving kudos to the school department, you gotta give kudos to this committee for the accomplishments of the Milton Public Schools. It is an excellent school system, and that's why people move here and continue to live here. And, um, you know, the voters support the public schools, because they believe in the public schools. And that is a lot due to the, uh, work of this school committee, which includes not intruding on the professionals' running of the schools. The school committee does not micromanage, it's not the boss of the school superintendent. Um, the school superintendent was hired to do the job, because she has qualifications and skills that, quite frankly, school committee members probably don't. Um, I was just reading about a school superintendent, uh, somewhere in the country who just resigned because the, the school committee was, uh, micromanaging and, and, uh, directing what the decision should be. I mean, that's a tension in the school policies, that it's recognized in the, in the school committee policies, that the, uh, the administration has some rein to do what they believe is right on curriculum matters and other matters. That the school committee might have power sometimes, but doesn't exercise that as a policy. And I think that's commendable. I think the school committee has failed, as I said, on transparency. Uh, I can give you some examples. You know, as I said, I used to enforce the open meeting law. The open meeting law is just the legal baseline. Um, the school committee should be aiming much higher than what the open meeting law requires, as far as transparency. I worry sometimes the school committee has not even met that legal baseline. Um, there was a substantive decision made about an assistant principal at the Pierce. Uh, I wasn't there. I can't tell you what happened at the finance subcommittee meeting, uh, that met at seven AM, I think on April nineteenth. And there was a quorum of the school committee present, and the school committee, through that quorum, made a decision about the Pierce assistant principal. Interestingly to me, the minutes still haven't been released. You look at the, the subcommittee, finance subcommittee minutes, they're about two lines long, and they say the rest of this will be released as the April nineteenth school committee minutes. Uh, we're two months later, and, um, the minutes from that meeting, but that's not the way it should be done, decisions being made at the subcommittee meeting. I haven't gone to the clerk's office to check whether that meeting was noticed properly under the open meeting law. Uh, I suspect it was. But, um, that seems to me not the most open, transparent way for the school committee to be doing its business. And the school committee-written policies, after getting past the legal basis for the school committee's just existence, the very first policy says that the school committee will have two-way communication with the citizens of the town of Milton and report on the problems and progress of the schools. Um, that's done in these meetings, which are open, but there often isn't very many people in those chairs. Citizen speak often occurs without anybody taking advantage of it. And that may be, because everybody believes everything's hunky-dory, and they don't have any complaints. But I don't think that's why. Uh, I think the citizens are not always engaged, as they should be, by this school committee. And the meetings themselves are a problem for that. If you're telling the citizens that to keep track what the school committee's doing, you have to devote two and a half hours of your time, it's bad enough that you guys are here for two and a half hours for the, for the meetings. A lot of the time spent in meetings, the ones that I've attended, I'm not sure that it needs to be spent in that meeting. I think the superintendent has an awful lot of good information to give. And she has the superintendent's e-blast, she could have the superintendent's TV blast that immediately follows the school committee meeting, keep the school committee meeting to an hour. And, um, there's ways of, of getting information to everybody, but to put the burden of two and a half hours of monitoring a school committee meeting is a lot to put on, on the citizens. Um, I think that, uh, the documents that are available on the website are sometimes a mishmash of confusing. The budget documents, they vary from year to year, and, and it's not even clear, they seem to be incomplete. I was looking at the FY thirteen budget, um, document, and there's clearly incomplete information in what's included in, uh, in that. Just to give you an example, the, the Milton Times reported that, that, um, I think the highest-paid teacher is the director of music. Um, that budget document on the website for FY thirteen has the director of music making something, I forget what it was, forty-eight, fifty. I suspect it's because the rest is paid by different funds than that chart, uh, listed on the website. Documents, uh, it's very confusing to me. I think those documents could be, uh, made much clearer with explanations, uh, about, uh, what citizens need to know to, to look those documents up. There's transparency issues on, on, uh, communicating with the citizens, um, that I think can and should be remedied. Uh, and that would be certainly my emphasis, on, on making sure, uh, transparency exists. And the measure of success, I think, will be that there are citizen speak, citizens here, uh, talking to you at every meeting, waiting their turn to speak. Criticism is not a bad thing. Criticism is a valuable thing. Criticism is how mistakes are corrected. Criticism is how better decisions are made. So if they were citizens who were agitated and engaged and here to speak to you about things that bothered them, that, to me, would be a good thing. If Superintendent Gormley felt heat from citizens, um, as she did her job and does it well, that would be a good thing. Um, that's the measure of success, I think, and what I would hope to bring to the school committee, is will the, the citizens be here complaining?
Thank you.
So, one of the, um...
Two minutes.
Wow. One of the things that, um, one realizes very quickly on becoming a school committee member is the breadth and depth of the responsibility. And that goes to making sure that you're representing, uh, every level of the school system, and the broad range of programs that touch many different types of students. How would you approach that, and, and how would you do that in a balanced way?
Well, you gotta listen to every voice. That's number one. And, you know, you also have to embrace not complain about the breadth and depth of the, uh, the population served by the Milton Public Schools. I've, I say that because I've heard, uh, sometimes from past school committee members, almost a complaint about, like, everything would be great if, uh, you know, special ed didn't take so much money in the school system's budget. Um, or questioning whether a particular student receiving services really has the ties to Milton that justifies it, and isn't it a shame that, and that kind of thinking, I, uh, adamant is, uh, wrong-thinking. You, you embrace the diversity of the population, you embrace the need for Milton to take care of its special ed kids and kids who need services, um, and you listen to all the voices. Um, and that's how better decisions are made.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay.
At this point, unless there is reason to do otherwise, I would have to take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Let me ask a question, because I, I thought before we had talked about ensuring, giving out three or four names, and then tonight, did you just say we're just gonna do one name? Because...
Well, I mean...
I think it's very difficult to narrow this from eleven people down to one person, to just pick one candidate.
I think our, our discussion, I mean, with Mrs. Kelly not being able to be here tonight, she'll be watching this, uh, on, on tape. How we move forward on Tuesday night is, is very much up to us. I, I, my vision of it is that we'll sit around and, and go through, and maybe it will be that people will say, I think I'm, I'm, you know, in favor of A, B, and C, or a couple names, or so forth. Or just try to, to talk, see if we have some sort of consensus. I mean, um, at some point, we're gonna have to, you know, walk down the table of eight people and say, we need a vote, and who is that for? And maybe through discussion, we can have some consensus before we get to that point.
I just would like to know, so I know what to prepare. I mean, I thought that we decided at our last meeting that we were gonna narrow it down to three or four candidates that we would maybe put forth.
Well, I, I think that was the intent, when we thought we were all going to be here.
No, I'm talking about, so, that's what we said we would do tonight, but when Mrs. Kelly couldn't be here, is that how we would maybe begin our next meeting, I guess?
I, I don't, it's a perfectly reasonable way to do it. I have, um, you know, to try to...
I think the preparation, no matter how we structure the discussion, the preparation is rank your candidates from top to bottom.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if we want to talk about the top three, the top four, the top six, I think we should be prepared for all of that discussion.
Maury, can't hear you too well with the microphone.
Sorry, so I said, um, no matter how we structure the discussion, I think the preparation is rank your candidates from top to bottom. So that if we need to talk about the top three, the top four, the top six, you're prepared for that.
Okay.
And we'll see how it, you know, it, it might be, in case someone just says, well, I, I think these are, you know, the three candidates I'm comfortable with, or the four candidates I'm comfortable with, and maybe by going along the table that way, we might have some apparent consensus, and we'll work from there. I mean, it'll be, it's an interesting process.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That it is.
Thank you.
And so, I, I think at that, we are adjourned.
Now, I'll second them.
Good night. Thank you all.
Good night.